I wish to call the Lee County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Thank you very much for attending this evening. We have a lot to do. We will have public hearings here shortly. I just wanted to remind everyone to please mute your cell phones, put it on buzz or vibrate, but if it rings in here, we'll stop and let you answer it and we'll wait. Used to do that when I was teaching classes. Okay. If you would all please stand with me for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please bow your heads. Dear God, please give us all wisdom to govern. Allow us to see the true needs of our people. Please give us the ability to be just and transparent. Allow us to be confident in what is good and fitting. Please give this board the ability to work together in harmony and for the best of Lee County. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a large, set number of items to add to the agenda. If I can recommend, we're going to move from the consent agenda, item 11A lottery funds application. Oh, excuse me, that's item 11L lottery fund applications to the consent agenda. And we're going to add a resolution. As, I don't have it, I'm sorry. The clerk's got notes here and I'm trying to decipher them. It says, "Resolution, Section 4."
Yes.
I've got it right here. I was just reading our notes here. Item 4, Presentation of a Resolution Honoring Elizabeth Kavasik. Under New Business. Ooh, she put a bunch of notes on here. I'm sorry.
Item 7G, we have an additional item for proposed legislation. Item 7H, we're asking for the addition of consideration of a resolution in support of a traffic signal at US 15501 and Deep River Road. And item 7I, we're asking for the addition of upcoming meeting schedule modifications discussion.
Thank you. It was on the second page. I was trying to read your handwriting, Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry.
You'll have to excuse us, we just came off of another meeting prior to this. Are there any other additional items for the agenda? If not, could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion's been made to add on the items to the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And if I can get a motion on the consent agenda, please.
Moved to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And can I get an approval on the agenda as amended, as well as the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now to start with the joint public hearings with the Lee County Planning Board. And Ms. Amy, if you would be so kind to start us off, please.
Good evening, Commissioners, Planning Board members and staff. Richard Odom is requesting to rezone a 15-acre portion of an 84-acre tract of land addressed as 130 Rocky Fork Road, excuse me, as illustrated on the screen behind you and on several maps within your agenda. The request is to rezone from light industrial to heavy industrial in preparation and planning for future development of the site. Therefore, he submitted a zoning map amendment application for your consideration. This is a standard general use rezoning request as opposed to a conditional rezoning request. Therefore, no site plan or subdivision plans or building plans are required as part of this rezoning request. There is a proposed subdivision plat included as part of the rezoning application which identifies the specific area proposed for rezoning. The existing zoning is light industrial. This is established to provide areas that contain a mix of light manufacturing uses, office park, and limited retail and service uses that service the industrial uses in an attractive business park setting. Examples of uses permitted in the light industrial zoning district include agricultural equipment sales and service, convenience stores with or without gas sales, farm landscape garden supply sales with or without outdoor storage, contractor's offices without outdoor storage, and machinery and equipment manufacturing with indoor operations only. There is a list of all the permitted uses in the light industrial zoning district included within your agenda package for your reference. The proposed zoning is heavy industrial. This district is established to provide for areas of heavy manufacturing, concentrated fabrication, manufacturing and industrial uses which are suitable based upon adjacent land uses, access to transportation, and the availability of public services and facilities. It is the intent of this district to provide environment for industries that is unencumbered by nearby residential or commercial development. Examples of uses permitted by right within the heavy industrial zoning district include agricultural equipment sales and service, convenience stores with or without gas sales, farm landscape garden supply sales with or without outdoor storage, food and beverage manufacturing, machinery and equipment manufacturing, and pharmaceutical manufacturing and warehouse structures. Once again, there is a complete list of all the permitted uses in the heavy industrial zoning district included in your agenda packet for your reference. There is heavy industrial zoning approximately 2,000 feet southeast of the site, further down Rocky Fort Church Road, that is developed as ST Wooton Corporation, a roadway construction and paving contractor with a concrete and asphalt plant. And the area I just referenced is the purple area in the lower right of the screen. The adjacent zoning and land uses, north, adjoining the site to the north on the same parcel as the area proposed to be rezoned, is vacant wooded land zoned light industrial. To the south, on the same parcel as the area proposed to be rezoned, is vacant wooded land in an area used for outdoor storage for Sanford contractors also zoned light industrial. East, opposite Rocky Fort Church Road, are single-family homes and vacant land zoned residential agricultural. And west, adjoining the site on the same parcel as the area proposed to be rezoned, is vacant wooded land zoned light industrial and two houses that front US-1 that are zoned residential agricultural. The Long Range Plan identifies the property as countryside, which is intended as a designation for agricultural and undeveloped lands outside of the urban service area. It encourages the preservation of the county's agricultural heritage and the conservation and maintenance of a rural lifestyle with limited residential density. A local example is the Avant's Ferry Road Corridor in Northeastly County. And information from the land use plan is provided as attachments to this report for your reference. Once again, there is the information included in your agenda, that's the page from the Long Range Plan, and then I've also provided the map from the Long Range Plan. This site is not located within a local conservation overlay district. Public water is available. Public sewer is not available given the rural location of the site, so any development on the site would need to be served by a private septic system. Regarding the staff recommendation, this rezoning request does not comply with the Long Range Plan designation of countryside, which includes land uses such as schools, churches, houses, farmland, and forest, not industrial uses. Therefore, staff is not supportive of this rezoning request. The existing zoning of light industrial predates the adoption of the current land use plan by Lee County in November of 2018 and would not be affected by this request. Additional information presented at the public hearing should also be considered in the recommendation and the final decision regarding the requested zoning map amendment. This concludes my report, and I'll stop at this time to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Amy. Are there any questions from the Commissioners? Seeing there are none, I do open the public hearing regarding the zoning map amendment application.
Before anyone else steps to the podium, I did receive an email that adjoining property owner asked me to share with you this evening. This is from Pam Knight of 327 Rocky Fort Church Road. I've lived on Rocky Fort Church Road most of my life. Growing up, the road was always dangerous because of the many trucks going to and from the quarry nearby on the other end of Peach Orchard Road. More recently, the addition of the recycling center near the other end of Peach Orchard Road, where it turns into Rocky Fort Church Road, has made traffic worse. And now, the tract of land right across from my house is being considered for heavy industrial use. The internet describes light industrial uses as not interfering with neighborhood amenity or pleasantness of adjacent residential areas. Heavy industrial use, on the other hand, is not residential friendly, and I would be living across from a junkyard, sawmill plant, milling operation, or worse. Please consider the consequences of making this a heavy industrial zone. It makes me anxious just to think about the possibilities of what could happen to my health, my animals' welfare, my neighbors and their children. This could not be good for any of us. Think about the repercussions, way of life, water issues. I'm on well water. Will the water be safe to drink? What about safety, loss of security and peace of mind, the dangers of living in a heavy industrial zone, the noise, increased traffic for residents and school buses, and pollution? I don't want to have to live across from that. Nobody should have to. Thank you for listening, Pam Knight.
Public hearing is now open. If you, speaking for or against, I would ask that when you come to the podium, please express your name fully and your address.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Odom.
Donnie Odom. Address, 2412 Brookwood Trail, Sanford. The, I'm speaking in favor of the rezoning. This is, this piece is part of an 84-acre tract, but it's actually part of the 150-acre tract that we have where our, where Sanford Contractors is located. So we, we own all the property around it. And what, while we're, while we're trying to get the zoning upgraded, is an asphalt plant or a concrete plant that requires the heavy industrial designation. So that's, that's what we're trying to, trying to get it, get it rezoned so when we expand, we can, it'll be handled. It's, it's, this has been industrial as long as we've had it, and it was a sand pit before, before we owned it. So I don't know the last time that it was agricultural. It's been a long, long time ago. But we're, we won't be adding any, there won't be an additional driveway put in. We'll either use the, our existing truck entrance, or if the DOT allows it, what we'd like to do is extend Peach Orchard Road straight across the intersection, make that a little bit safer. And, and then the entrance to this site would be off of, off Peach Orchard Road. But this is our first step, so we've not, we've not gone to the DOT yet. Any questions from anybody? It's kind of a, that's about it.
Okay. Commissioner Lovick, any questions?
No, I, I mean, I live down Rocky Fort Church Road and I know when they built their plant there, in their business, and I don't know, they got some big equipment over there and I don't know what, heavy industrial with your big cranes, what more you would need there. So thank you for considering, bringing it forward.
Commissioner Reeves, any questions?
I have a couple, one for staff. Did I understand and say there were two houses along that road, or?
Amy, got that.
Yes, sir. Let me show you, there are two houses that front US-1 that are behind this site. Do you see the site illustrated in, you see the site outlined in the orange line?
Yes.
And then to the lower left, you see the RA with the two lots right there, the green, with the green dots?
I do.
Those are the two lots that have houses on them, but they actually front US, sorry, they front US-1.
Okay. Thank you.
Cam, Commissioner Sharp.
I think I heard you say that the ST Wooton was right down the street and it's heavy industrial, correct?
Right. And Warren Meadows Rock Quarry is about a half mile down Peach Orchard Road, so it's...
Thank you.
No questions.
Commissioner LaBelle. Commissioner Connect. Commissioner Carver.
No.
Is there, Mr. Odom, is there any plans to provide a buffer if said?
A buffer? Well, there's, there's a lot of buffer will be around it. And what we have, the convenience, convenience center for the county is, you'll go, what I've talked to Dr. Crumpton about is, is maybe if we extend Peach Orchard Road, where we can maybe able to put the driveway into the convenience center off of Peach Orchard Road, which would lessen the, the traffic going directly on to, we're making it a little bit safer going on to Rocky Fort Church Road. So anyway, it actually is behind it, so the convenience center, I guess, would be a buffer between it and the highway.
Yeah, we are, we are an adjoining property owner, and we had actually discussed at one point swapping some property to allow that road to come across there, and then we'd actually, instead of accessing it off of Rocky Fort Church Road, we would access it off of the extension right there.
Right.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for this project? Seeing there are none, is there anyone speaking against this project? Anymore? For or against? I now declare this public hearing closed. Next item on the agenda is UDO text amendment and staff memo, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. As Chairman Smith indicated, this is a public hearing for a text amendment, first of two I have in front of you tonight. This one's a little bit unusual, as I presented to the city council last night. Normally, when I go through text amendments, and I'll do that with the second one, I give you kind of a staff report and a kind of an overview of specifics of the text amendment. I'm going to refrain from doing that just because of the size of this particular amendment. You all may recall back on March 30th, we had a joint workshop here in this facility where you, your planning board, as well as your peers from City of Sanford and the Town of Broadway, heard from a consultant engineer, or excuse me, consultant attorney that we had hired to basically do a thorough review of every single page, every single article of our UDO with the express purpose of making sure that we comply with new state law changes. And very simply, over the last several years, planning, planning professionals, attorneys, developer representatives, et cetera, have worked together to update the state's planning laws. And that came to fruition with the adoption of 160D, is what it's known as, General Statute 160D, and it replaced the county's equivalent 153A, which was all of your ability and rate rules in terms of what authority you have for zoning and land use, subdivisions, et cetera. And it also replaced 160A for cities and municipalities. Combine those into one, basically, set of rules that everybody plays by now. So with that, I just wanted to explain to you again, based on that workshop, every single article of the UDO had some level of changes, but overwhelming majority of that was simply reference changes, moving 153, 160A out with a new reference and kind of double-checking those. So I didn't think you wanted to go through the minutia of going through all those several hundreds, if not, you know, 1,000-plus changes of going through that tonight. I will pause for questions. I did want to point out, Mr. Chairman, the, the changes are available on our webpage, and I was going to read that out for the public's benefit. It's at www.sanfordnc.net backslash, right backslash, 766, right backslash, proposed- -UDO-changes. And so anybody interested in that certainly can, can take a look at that page. Obviously, they can contact us as well. But I will tell you, it would probably put you to sleep. It's a good read at night if you have nothing better else to do. And I'll pause there for the public hear- I, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's all I had.
Thank you, sir. Yes, I did dive into it, and yes, it's a minutia of changing numbers, mostly. Okay. I'm opening the public hearing for a proposed UDO text amendment due to North Carolina General Statute 160D updates. All those in favor, please come forward, and as you do, remind you to give us your full name and your address, please. Are there anyone opposed to the UDO changes? Seeing there's no one for, would you like to speak for it, Marshall? There was a lot of work put into it.
I would just, one thing I did want to mention, it just occurred to me, I did want to make mention of the work of your planning board. We did have some great comments from some of your planning board members, and we were able to forward those to the attorney, and they were able to get responses. Again, it was a good opportunity there for staff and the planning board to work together.
Well, we appreciate the efforts of the planning board as well as the staff. Last, oh, question, I'm sorry, questions?
What exactly are you doing and why are you doing?
So, again, the best way I could summarize it for you would be all of your authority that comes from the state in terms of our ability to do zoning, and any authority that we have used to be for a county, it used to be in what was called General Statutes 153A, and the cities was 160A. What they did over the last several years is they merged all of those rules and all of our authority into one set of rules, which is now known as 160D. And so because of that, it's great from a practitioner standpoint, because they also cleaned up a lot of language and made it a lot easier to understand and move through processes. But your ordinances all have the old references in them, so we have to go in and kind of literally, page by page, take those old references out and put these new references in. Instead of, instead of staff having to try to do that, we worked through, the county and city kind of split the costs, and we hired out a third-party attorney, Parker Poe, who was able to go in and spend that time to go through each page. Again, staff was involved, Attorney Parrish, Attorney Patterson for the city, and our planning staff. We were able to take the drafts, re-review and make sure we agree with all those changes, but ultimately, that's what we're presenting you tonight, is kind of a final draft of that. Does that answer your question?
In part, what legislative action does it prohibit? Now?
What legislative actions does it prohibit?
Yes.
The, it won't, there really isn't any changes in terms of policies or procedures. I mean, the example I would give you is they phased out some older tools that really aren't used anymore, if that's what you're getting at, like conditionals, what used to be conditional use zoning.
Well, look at your own second paragraph coming from you. Removal of the MSU D.O.
That's the next text amendment, Mr. Reeves. That's-
Oh, that's the next one?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We got two tonight.
They're printed on front and back on my paper here, but go ahead.
So, did I answer your question on the other? So again, this is, this is a big overhaul of the whole UDO, but it's very technical in nature. The, the point I tried to make with the city last night, I would make to you, is there was no intent to change any of your regulatory, your policy, things that you established locally, setbacks, et cetera, uses and things like that. This is really all about just shifting away from old language and replacing with new language and new authority.
Okay.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Seeing there are none, I do declare this hearing closed. Next item on the agenda is UDO text amendment, and Marshall.
Yes, thank you. This amendment is a request or a consideration for a change to your mining. Essentially, it's asking consideration that you remove your mining special use overlay district. And let me try to give you a brief history and background on that. You may recall, a few years ago, this board took action to hire a consultant, and we went and we looked at different ways to address our current rules that we have for mining and quarrying. At that time, we allowed a special use permit, was the only, the only authority that was required was under a special use permit, which was granted by your Board of Adjustment and didn't go through this body, but it was allowed in all districts. As a result, you all asked us to look into that. We partnered with another law firm, and they were able to assist us in writing new language. As part of that, they came back with a two-step process. The new process required that whenever somebody wanted to do a mine, a traditional quarry, surface mine, is they had to go through an overlay zoning. And it was under this new language, or this language, the mining special use overlay district, wherein they would have to come in front of this body as a rezoning request, and you all would have to approve that. Then they would apply for the old, the special use permit like they used to do before. What is being asked that you consider is that the rezoning aspect of that be removed. In other words, you would go back to where if somebody wanted to want to do a mine in Lee County, in the unincorporated area, is that they would apply for the special use permit, it would go through your Board of Adjustment, and we still have all the rules and regulations as it relates to that process, the quasi-digital evidentiary hearing, but they would no longer have to come in front of you all for a legislative approval. One thing I would point out is there, so again, we're asking, or asking you to consider removing the whole of 4.16 of the ordinance, which was added a few years ago, but there is a section within that, 4.16.5, sorry for getting technical on you, but that covers special use permits. And so we're asking that if you do want to remove that, we do think it would be wise to take that part, since it deals with special use permits, and move that to Article 5, to move into Article 5 where the rest of the information about special use permits is. And I'll pause there, I know I'm throwing a lot at you. And I do have, Mr. Chairman, when you open the public hearing, I do have an email I'd like to read from the citizen.
And if I, if I may, the special use permit section of the, of the mining ordinance was also updated when we hired that consultant as well. So that, that section was also updated with his advice.
That's correct. So again, we're simply asking, or the request is that you consider removing the legislative actions, so they wouldn't have to come in front of this board for that act, but they would still have to do the special use permit request and go through your Board of Adjustment. And as Attorney Parrish indicated, we would still keep the new rules that were updated when the consultant assisted us at that time.
Okay. I wish to open the public hearing for consideration of text amendments to the jointly adopted City of Sanford, Lee County, Town of Broadway Unified Development Ordinance, UDO, to remove Section 4, 1.16, mining special use overlay district, and to update Table 4.61, permitted use matrix.
Mr. Chairman, I'll read the email now if it's appropriate.
You may, sir. This for or against?
This is actually against.
Okay. We'll start with those against.
It says, "Hi, Marshall, I am aware that the Lee County Planning Board is having a special meeting tonight regarding some required changes to our UDO. My comment feedback is regarding the portions of the UDO for mining permits. I understand that many of these text changes are required by a change in NC State law, so it is what it is. I am, in general, I am writing to express my concern that by loosening the regulations for mining permits, especially, we may allow the type of industrial growth in the community that would actually discourage the continuing boom of residential and commercial development that we have enjoyed here in Lee County. As full disclosure, I am currently president of Carolina Trace Association and was involved in the lengthy, lengthy court battle on the Little River Quarry. I have spoken to the county commissioners in the past about preserving and attracting further residential bedroom community attractions from both Fort Bragg Community to the south and the Raleigh-Carry Community to the north. I am so excited at the continuing interest of the health and auto industries that are moving into our county. Keeping Duke Energy from dumping, storing coal ash here was a win also in preserving the perception that Lee County is a busy, valuable territory and not just a backwoods area to exploit for our raw materials. I understand the importance of natural resources and minerals. We are, after all, here on the edge of the Piedmont geographic area. However, we are such a small county that I am cautious if we allow the growth of too many more mining operations." many more mining operations here. Thank you. David Smoke, 96, Northridge Trail, Sanford."
Anyone else for or against? Yes, sir. Come to the podium, please, and state your name and address.
I've done this before. My name is Gerald Merritt. I live at 2009 Traceway here in Sanford. I know some of you know who I am, because I was involved in the very extensive review of the Board of Adjustments for the application from Little River Quarry. And as a part of that, became quite familiar with the rules and regulations governing mines and quarries in the state of North Carolina. Marshall Downey knows me very well, because I submitted this proposed text amendment over four years ago, which was incorporated into the review by the consultants that you hired to revise your U D O, specifically those portions of the U D O that you want to revise and eliminate tonight. I want to read just two paragraphs to you, if I might. In the course of our review of the various counties, 100 counties in North Carolina, we found that 53% prohibit mining in quarries in all zoning districts except heavy industry. 63%, 63% prohibit in all areas except heavy and light industries. Lee County was unique in that essentially, if you have five acres of land in Lee County, you can apply for a special use permit and open a quarry. Unless you happen to live next door to a court, excuse me, a church, you're likely to get it approved in this county. Even though the county might like it, courts have shown that they'd be in favor of it. So the changes that were incorporated to have the special mining district was a compromise. What we really wanted was it to be restricted to heavy industry only. Removing that requirement, that the rezon for a special quarry, special mining district, undermines everything that we were trying to accomplish and which your consultants recommended to you. I also understand that you want to change some of the requirements to have all the state federal permit applications submitted by the applicant looking for a special use permit. Let me read about that as well. And by the way, after the extensive review of the Little River, several members of your Board Adjustments came up to those of us who were opposed to it and expressed great appreciation for all the expert witnesses that we brought into them and the information we were able to provide, because they didn't have the resources to get that. And one of the reasons we wanted to include, require that an applicant submit their state and federal applications for the same type permits is it provides you with that information. It's certainly not an extra step for the applicant, they have to do it anyway, but it provides that information to your Board of Adjustments, so they can make a more informed decision about what they had to do. So essentially, the amendment was designed to bring up the Lee County up to in concert with the rest of the counties in North Carolina and to ensure the health and the safety of the citizens of Lee County. For the life of me, I can't understand why you would want to lose the opportunity to approve a rezoning and have your input as well as the Board of Adjustments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for or against?
Well, now that I'm on the right page, I'd like my question answered.
Yes, sir.
Where'd this come from? I thought that section was put in for the protection of the community.
So it was discussed at a joint planning commission meeting?
All right.
And it was asked for, basically, that it be put on there for a discussion topic, and it came out of that, at the recommendation of the joint planning commission.
So it came from that committee?
Yes, sir.
Anyone in particular?
I believe it was introduced by the chair, which is Mr. Taylor, City Council for Sanford.
Okay. Do you mind him coming up and explaining why it's been recommended?
Would the chair of the combined committee would like to come forward, please, the planning
But before you do, so am I correct when I say I thought that that was added because, one, recommended by the consultant, and two, in order to help protect people in the county?
At the time that it was adopted, this board wanted to look at ways that they could do those kinds of things, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Reeves, for your question. To extend to you why it was brought before me and a couple other people, when we started digging into what we're doing and the ordinances that we're doing, I'll get back to my days on the Mining and Energy Board, where we were, where we were given a draft by the legislature to not exclude industry from being here, but also to work to protect our resources as well. When we looked at this, and there's going to be other items that's going to be coming before you that we're currently looking at, we're dealing with the item with extended stay hotels now. There's a lot of issues that we're dealing with. And this particular issue, we felt like there may be some sensibility, and I will defer to your legal counsel of courts, of being able to hold up in court, as challenged. And it takes that liability off of the board, per se. That's why I pursued your county manager, I talked to your legal counsel, I talked to Marshall, I talked to our staff, and that's where we decided to put it before the Joint Planning Commission, and it was unanimous approval from the Joint Planning Commission based on those parameters.
Well, did you hold a public hearing to discuss it with the public?
All of our meetings are publicly, and they're duly noted. This is the process that we follow, even if it's something that comes before City Council or the Town of Broadway, we follow the same procedure on all those issues. So it does provide you the opportunity to address this in a public hearing setting here tonight, but also, when they render a decision either for or against, it also gives you the ability to come and debate that issue again as well.
I think if people, if more people have understood what you were proposing during that committee meeting, more people might have shown up. When I heard about it, I was concerned, because I thought that was a safety valve for Lee County, and that's why it was being proposed.
And certainly not speaking for what your board would do, I would recommend, even hearing from your legal counsel tonight, I think that would give you a good indication.
Go ahead and ask him.
Well, I mean, I'll just defer to her, just talk about what we've had issues on.
I think the question that was posed to me was whether or not it was legal to remove the mining overlay district, and the answer is that is correct. I don't see anything wrong with that. However, I think it's a policy decision amongst the board as to whether or not they would want to leave that legislative piece in there.
Which is why we took it through the channels that we took it through, i.e., Joint Planning Commission to you guys, to the Lee County Planning Commission, back to you guys for a final vote. So that was the procedure. We're going to come together with other things as well.
How many people were in attendance that night, though, do you recall? Public?
Probably 15, 20?
No, not at the table.
You had seven or eight in the audience, plus the staff, plus, probably about 15 to And we knew we were going to end up through this procedure. This is not anything new that we're not, it's nothing new that we would normally do.
I understand that. What I'm trying to understand is why it's being recommended to be removed?
We're looking at all of our ordinances. We're looking at everything relative to-
I'm looking at this one.
It was brought to our attention. It was some concerns we had from, actually, it was some concerns we had from people that were doing the sand pits.
All right, thank you.
Any other further questions?
Any other questions? Commissioner Lovick?
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner LaValle? Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Carver?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
A last call for anyone for or against? I now proclaim this hearing closed. We now can excuse the-
Well, they may want to stay. If they could maybe just stay for the next item on the agenda, please.
Next item on the agenda, please? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes. We'll excuse the board here in a second. Next item on the agenda. On behalf of the Lee County Board of Commissioners in Lee County and the citizens of Lee County, this resolution is honoring the service of Elizabeth Kavasik, whereas the Lee County Board of Commissioners is proud to recognize the willingness of citizens who contribute to the well-being of fellow residents by giving tirelessly of their time and energy without desire for recognition, remuneration, or personal gain. And whereas Elizabeth Kavasik served on the Lee County Planning Board, the Lee County Board of Adjustments from June of 2008 until June of 2017, and whereas Elizabeth Kavasik dedicated an extensive amount of time and input during her tenure serving Lee County, including leading the board as chair. And whereas, in her personal life, Elizabeth Kavasik was a proud mother of four, a loving wife, and was a planning branch manager with the NV5 Engineering Consultants. And whereas it is the desire of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to recognize and honor the dedicated service and achievements of Elizabeth Kavasik and to express its appreciation for her contributions to Lee County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Lee County Board of Commissioners that it hereby acknowledges that Elizabeth Kavasik was a civic and community-oriented person. And on behalf of the citizens of Lee County, the board wishes to honor the life and service of Elizabeth Kavasik, presented this 19th day of May, 2021. Moved to approve. Motion's been made to approve the resolution honoring Mrs. Kavasik. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now we may excuse the board. I understand you're going into the theater or the classroom?
Classroom.
Going into the classrooms? Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments for the seat?
Yes, sir.
Seeing that there are none, under old business, request from Audentis Therapeutics Incorporated for an extension to their incentive agreement.
Yes, sir, I can present that. Mr. Randolph is present if the board has further questions for him. But this, if the board recalls, was an incentive agreement with, at the time, Audentis Therapeutics. The board approved that in February, on February 10th of 2020. The agreement reflects the performance measures that the company must adhere to before being paid the incentive. The company never signed their, the agreement, and so they actually made a request not long ago to Saga due to issues surrounding COVID. In the process of getting the building ready for production, they have asked the board to just shift the years back one year. And since the board, since the company had not signed the agreement, we went ahead and made the changes to the years, just shifting it all back one year. And then we also made, changed the name, they are now Astellas Gene Therapies. And so we've made all those changes, and at this time, we're just asking the board to approve the attached agreement and authorize the chair to sign.
Any questions from the board? Do I hear a motion? So moved. Motion's been made to approve the request from Audentis Therapeutics Incorporated for an extension of their incentive agreement with the County of Lee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is to approve the MOU with the CCC Board of Trustees related to the purchase of property.
Sure, I can take that one. So as the board is aware, we have entered into an option to purchase the 22 acres and the building located at 2101 Nash Street, which is the Magneti Morelli Building for the Community College. We did think that it was appropriate to go ahead and put in place an MOU with the Community College surrounding their plans and to have something that indicated that they still are agreeable to have enough room for Lee, early college and to expand their library, and also that they are going to dispose of the two buildings within the industrial park, which would offset whatever fundings that they were requesting from the board. So at this time, we just asked the board to approve the MOU and authorize the chair to sign. And they have, the Community College has already signed it, and we're just waiting on that signature document.
Any questions on the MOU? I hope everyone had a chance to read it. Any questions?
Moved to approve the recommendation.
Motion has been made to approve the MOU with the Central Carolina Community College Board of Trustees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is financing for the purchase of the Marielli property for Central Carolina Community College. And Ms. Mentor?
Good evening. In preparation for us to purchase the Morelli property, we have been working with Davenport, our financial advisors, and they put out a request for proposals to the banks for short-term financing. You have a memorandum from Davenport in your package that explains who all we received bids from and the analysis of those bids. And after reviewing everything and conversations with Regions Bank, or technically Regions Equipment Financing, Commercial Equipment Finance, they offered us a rate of 0.65% for a two-year loan. We can prepay that loan with no penalty after June 2022. If we prepaid prior to that, there would be basically a 1% penalty. After the analysis and the potential financing timeframe, we went, we are recommending that we go with them. We anticipate the limited obligations bonds being issued somewhere between June 22 and June 23 for those. We looked at it too. Earliest, you know, we think we would, even if we got anything earlier, it would only be a few months, and analyzing if we did a prepayment for a few months, that we still were saving enough money on interest to make it worthwhile to go with them with that prepayment penalty there, although we hope to be able to time it where we do not have to do that. So based on their recommendation, or our recommendation with Davenport, we are asking you to consider the resolution that's in your package that's entitled Resolution Accepting the Proposal of Regions Commercial Equipment Finance LLC in Connection with an Installment Financing for the Acquisition of Existing Facilities to Be Used by Central Carolina Community College. And the amount that we're looking at, the max, would be $7,400,000. And if you approve the resolution this evening, we will schedule a public hearing for you June 7th meeting.
Any questions from Mrs. Mentor? Seeing there are no questions, do I hear a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion's been made to adopt the resolution accepting the proposal of Regions Commercial Equipment Finance LLC in connection with an installment financing for the acquisition of existing facilities to be used by Central Carolina Community College. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Under new business, Lee County Fire Advisory Board, Fire District Budget Recommendations. Mayor Andrews, sir?
Chairman Smith, Commissioners-
Chairman Smith, Commissioners. Know it's hard to believe it's been a year since I last came before you, but it has. It's been an interesting year. As instructed by the Lee County Board of Commissioners, the Lee County Fire Advisory Board has completed its annual review of the budgets from the Lee County Volunteer Fire Departments for fiscal year 2021, 2022. On April 13th, the Fire Advisory Board met in person to review and discuss the budget requests from each of the Lee County Volunteer Fire Departments. During the budget review, we developed a list of questions and/or concerns related to each department's budget request. That list of questions was sent to representatives of the seven volunteer fire departments. On April 27th, the Fire Advisory Board met with representatives from each of the volunteer fire departments to answer questions, discuss concerns, and review the data. You should have received a recommendation letter from the Fire Advisory Board in your packet, but if you will allow me, I'll review some of the highlights from the recommendation. Tremway Fire Department requested an increase in their budget of $7,328, or about 1.6%. The department has increased in personnel salaries by about $8,908, which is a cost of living increase and a slight increase in the allotted part-time hours. They're also applying for grants to replace their aging SCBA, which is self-contained breathing apparatus, or air packs for short. The growth in the tax base can cover the increase in their budget request, and they can maintain their current tax rate of 9.6 cents. Deep River Fire Department requested a budget increase of $1,060 over their current budget. The department has increased in their turnout gear by $10,000, and then about six in their SCBA. They're in the process of purchasing a new pumper tanker with plans to have it in service later this summer. Deep River's fire district base, uh, tax base increased by $28 million over the current year, which is going to allow them to have the increase in their budget and maintain their current rate of 11.5 cents. Cape Fear Fire Department has a request, an increase of $30,524, or 7.1% over their current budget. The department has increased in personnel costs by $59,324. Their plan is to hire a full-time paid fire chief. To help offset this increase, the department has reduced part-time hours by 20 hours a week, and they have reduced their capital reserve by $30,000. The Cape Fear Fire District tax base grew by 11.2 million. As you are aware of, as of July 1st, 2021, Cape Fear Fire Department has been contracted by Lee County to provide fire protection to the Clearwater Fire District. You should have received an updated budget data spreadsheet reflecting the Cape Fear Fire Department and the Clearwater Fire District data points. We broke them out. The Clearwater tax base grew by 4 million. The combined growth in tax base of Cape Fear and Clearwater, along with the use of $4,000 from their fund balance, will allow Cape Fear to keep its tax rate at 12.1 cents. It will lower the Clearwater Fire District's tax rate from 18.7 to 12.1. Northview Fire Department requested a budget increase of $89,735, or 17.1% over the current budget. The increase in the department's budget, $33,700, that is for personnel. The department is in the process of adding another 40-hour part-time equivalent to provide additional staffing. They have increased their capital reserve by $40,000 for the purpose of remodeling the station, to accommodate plans, to add personnel, to go to 24-hour service eventually. Northview's Fire District's tax base grew by $273 million. The tax base growth will maintain, will allow that department to increase their budget and maintain their tax rate at eight cents, which it is right now. Lemon Springs Fire Department requested a budget increase of $7,210, or 2.4%. The increase represents a cost of living raise and an increase in the number of part-time hours. The department is also requesting the use of $70,000 from their fund balance for the purchase of new SCBA or self-containing breathing apparatus. Their air packs are aging out. The Lemon Springs Fire District tax base grew by 14.8 million. The growth in the tax base will allow the department to maintain its current tax rate of 9.6. Carolina Trace Fire Department requested an $18,112 increase, or 4%, in their budget. The increase in the budget was a result of about $6,000 in a cost of living adjustment for their paid people. They're also increased their budget line item for the PPE or turnout gear by 18,000 as they have started a process of replacing aging turnout gear. The Carolina Trace Fire District tax base grew by 8.3 million. The department's projected fund balance is only 8,000, but the growth in the tax base, along with the use of the 8,000 in fund balance, will allow them to maintain their tax rate of 11.5. Northwest Pocket Fire Department increased their budget by 20,000, or 7.2. 18,000 of that was an increase in capital reserve. They continue to build up capital reserve for the purchase of a new 2100-gallon tanker and also to replace aging air packs. Northwest Pocket's Fire District had a growth in tax base of about 3.8 million. With their growth in the tax base and the use of $28,000 in their fund balance account, they will be able to maintain their current rate of 14.5. As part of our discussion with the fire departments, we asked how the COVID-19 pandemic had impacted their ability to retain members and recruit new members. And for the most part, we found that the departments did not see a significant decrease in their membership. Obviously with the pandemic, the ability to have events to recruit new members or volunteers was kind of postponing a lot of incidents, so there wasn't a lot of activity recruiting new members. The budget recommendations for the Lee County Fire Department, as noted above, by the, were made based on the information available and the discussions with representatives from the fire departments among, also discussions among the Fire Advisory Board members. As you will note in your packet, none of the fire district's tax rate will increase in the coming year. As I mentioned, the departments continue to face challenge with replacing aging air packs and upgrading their equipment in order to provide the utmost level of service to the community while at the same time ensuring the protection of the volunteers. The cost of these upgrades and replacements continue to increase year after year. This year, the growth in the tax base was sufficient enough to absorb the increase in budgets while allowing the rates to remain the same. The Lee County Fire Departments work hard to make the best use of the funds available in providing for the safety of their members and serving and protecting their communities. The Lee County Fire Advisory Board supports their effort and continued service to the citizens of Lee County. Thank you for your time. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor Andrews. And as a member of that board, I can state succinctly that the fire departments are always aware of that tax rate. Any questions? Commissioner Lovick.
Good, thank you, Doc.
Commissioner Reeves.
Thank you for the job you did.
Commissioner, Commissioner Sharp.
Thank you for what you do with the Fire Advisor.
Commissioner Lavalley. Commissioner Connect. Commissioner Carver.
Just one question for the Cape Fear Fire Department. You, you make some comments about, there were some reservations about the concern for members of the Fire Advisory Board about the precedent that move of hiring the, the captain would be, and it really doesn't answer that issue in there. What are those concerns, and are they really not worthy of being concerned about here?
Um, so it was not a unanimous vote to recommend their budget. It was a 3-1 vote that evening. The concern is none of the seven existing fire departments have what is classified as a paid fire chief. Several have paid administrators, so I guess the concern or the conversation and discussion we had that evening was the point that this was going to set a new precedent for the county fire departments in the move to hiring a full-time paid chief. And the presentation from Cape Fear was a little weak on substance, but after discussion with the Fire Advisory Board, you know, it was a 3-1 vote to recommend. Uh, I think the, the concern was just the, um, information provided was a little weak paper-wise, but, um, you know, after we talked about and discussed it, we felt like that was their desires to move to a paid fire chief to move their department. They are convinced that that is what they need to do to move their department forward. Don't know if that answers your question or not, but that was kind of the conversation we had that evening.
I, I think that's fine. Thank you.
Who is the non-paid chief down there? Is it Billings? Is the, um...
Who's the current chief at Cape Fear? So the current chief is Josh Billings. He's been the current fire chief, is volunteer. He's not a paid fire chief. Is, um, he's been the chief going on eight years plus now.
Okay. Well, I'm aware that he had, you know, he, he runs another business.
Correct. His full-time job is Billings Electric.
Right. And he, would he be?
Our understanding, he is their leading candidate for that position. Yes, sir. Yes, that was how it's presented, that they are hiring from, with inside their department, and their plans are to hire, or to offer Chief Billings the job as a full-time paid chief. The information we provided at the meeting, they're in the process of redrawing their bylaws. Their bylaws, you know, are based on a volunteer fire department, so this would, they've hired an attorney. My understanding is to redraw their bylaws for the ability to hire a paid chief instead of elect a volunteer chief.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing there is none, do I hear a motion, please?
Moved to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the Lee County Fire Advisory Board's Fire District Budget Recommendations.
Hold that.
Any further dis...
We gotta have a public hearing?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. This, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry. Sorry. Would you change your motion, Commissioner Sharp?
I'll change mine.
It was...
You were the one, I'm sorry. I heard it from over there. Okay. So the motion, I was on the wrong page, so recommend we consider the Fire District Budget Recommendation for Lee County Fire Advisory Board and to schedule a public hearing. Is that clear?
That's my new motion. Yeah.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is the tax bill write-off.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. Coming before you tonight with the 2010 tax bill write-off, we hereby request the authority to write off the delinquent 2010 tax bills in the amount of $31,793.78 per North Carolina General Statute 105-373G and 105-378. These taxes were first due September 1st of 2010. A detailed list of the delinquent accounts is on file with the Clerk's Office and available on the county commissioner's website. Also, I've attached a history of the write-offs over the last couple of years. We would ask for your approval of this item, sir.
Moved to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the tax write-off from 2010. Any discussion? Seeing there are none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next item on the agenda is approval of option to purchase agreement for a plus or minus 2.46-acre lot located at PIN 965245349500. Matt Parrish.
No, that's, that's gonna be mine tonight.
Okay, okay.
Um, this is a piece of property that the county has looked at for approximately 10 years and have made two previous offers on the property in an attempt to gain that property and add it to the OT Sloan Park. The option is for a purchase price of $500,000 from the Michael Thomas Harrington Trust. The property is opposite the State Employees Credit Union, and, you know, the credit union actually paid more for their lot. I will leave it at that, so, um, the price of property in highly commercial areas is going up in Lee County, but, uh, we're seeking your approval so that we can begin due diligence on the property and move towards a close.
Commissioner Lovick? Okay. No discussion? No questions? Motion's been made by Commissioner Sharp to approve the option to purchase agreement for the two-plus, plus or minus 2.46-acre lot located near the State Federal Credit Union. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Dr. Crumpton. I am seeking, I'm requesting approval of a change order request, number seven, in the amount of $16,232 in order to address fire code issues pertaining to the second-floor license fire alarm requirements in the second floor of the registered deeds building. Proposed changes include 11 light fixtures, two receptacles, a switch, pool stations, intelligent smoke detectors, horn strobes, which will be linked back to the alarm panel on the first floor, as well as a ADA compliant transaction window. Do you have any questions?
Any questions of Santiago?
They back in operation?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion's been made to approve the change order request, number seven, in the amount of $16,232 in order to address the fire code requirements in the second floor of the new record of deeds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I am also requesting approval of the agreement for engineering services between Lee County and McGill and Associates in order to receive professional engineering services in support of our 48378117, 0121 Horton Park Community Pool and Splash Pad in the amount of $129,000, as well as our ability to finalize the contract when it's reviewed by legal. So we have an initial contract that's just going through legal review, but we have negotiated the fees, sir.
Any questions for Santiago?
Yeah, once we complete the review of the contract, we just ask, like Santiago said, the board will just authorize the chair to sign it, so it doesn't have to come back to the board, and we can go ahead and move forward.
Moved to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the request of agreement for engineering services between Lee County, North Carolina, McGill and Associates in order to receive professional engineering services in support of Project 48378117 Horton Park Community Pool and Splash Pad in the amount of $129,200. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And finally, I am requesting an award of RFP 48390121 for a Lee County multi-sports complex survey to Mac Adams Company. I'm requesting authorization to begin contract negotiation and fee negotiations with Mac Adams to conduct phase-one surveys in order to identify and mitigate possible challenges with the proposed purchase of this property to be utilized as the county's multi-sports complex, as well as our ability to finalize the contract when reviewed by legal. Sir, we do have an update I sent to you that, initial fees, um, so we'll, that is what I'm requesting today, sir.
And you can go ahead and tell them the initial fee.
Yes, sir.
To do that.
Yes, sir. What we have will be no more than 110,960, but we will have to enter negotiations with that. I just received that amount prior to the meeting, so that's why it's not in the agenda, so...
The bulk of that is, um, the, the property has to be surveyed and, and it has to be recombinations done, and that is an expensive process, so... But we'll do the soil, soil boarding, and, phase-one environmental, um, and, and other items to make sure that the property is suitable before we jump into all those recombinations. So it is, is, it is an expensive process for, you know, a hundred-plus acre site to do all that.
Sure.
And the same with this agreement. As Santiago said, um, just once we've been able to approve it, we'll just go ahead and authorize the chair to sign it tonight. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Lovick? Commissioner Reeves?
Where's, where's the time line?
For this survey, sir?
Yes.
No more than 45 calendar days after tomorrow. They know this.
How many?
Forty-five, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
No, sir.
Commissioner Lovale? Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Carver?
No.
Thank you for that question, Commissioners.
Need a motion?
Move to approve. Motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve recommending the RFP 48390121 Lee County Multi-Sports Complex Survey to the Mac Adams Company. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All the way.
Item 7G, proposed legislation. Madam Barrister, this is yours as well.
Um, well.
Well.
Not, I, I was requested to put it on the agenda, so.
Okay.
I'm happy to talk if you'd like.
This is just to, I think I requested this. We, this is just to, um, we did a resolution prior that we voted on unanimously and this is just the, um, this is just a similar, a general summary of rules change that we're gonna send to our representatives. They've been very busy with COVID and the budget. And they weren't sure whether or not that we could, outside the three-mile zone, just limit it to industrial and not commer-, I mean, residential as well. And so we did some, I had legal do some research on that and they figured that, um, they're, they couldn't find a reason, correct, that they couldn't just do it for industrial purposes as the city had requested. So, um, this will help our legislatures go ahead and put it in their, um, in their review on their desk so they know that they can afford with this as a local bill. And this just simply states, as you can see, that outside the three mile, that we can, um, have annexation for industrial purposes if the county does approve it so the city can bring water and sewer to the industrial location, which, um, I think will help clear any issues up. I think our biggest thing was that we didn't want to limit jobs and industrials for coming around the airport or anywhere along that corridor, um, if they required water and sewer. Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions of Commissioner Connect?
Was that document placed in the agenda?
I'm sorry? Yes, it was in the agenda, correct.
It wasn't in their initial agenda. It was added what day was we repub-, I can't remember, but when, when they received the printed agenda, it was not in there.
Was it in their packet?
It, it was updated in the additional agenda.
If, if you need time to look at it, I don't have a problem with putting it on next.
Yeah, I don't have a copy. That's why I was asking.
No issues. I did not realize that. I don't have it. So at least you know where, where it comes from. I don't have a problem moving it to the, uh, next agenda so you have time to review it.
All right.
Not an issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that what you wish to do is pull it, present it on the next agenda?
Yeah, so we can, we can just have this for discussion and then, not an issue, bring it to the next.
I mean, I have it in front of me. Would you like me to read it?
No, that's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. No further discussion on that. Next item on the agenda is consideration of resolution in support of a traffic signal at US 15501 and Deep River Road.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take this one as soon as it pops up on my screen. Um, we received a request from Senator Bergen to pass this resolution. There are emergency DOT transportation funds available in his district and in consultation with our engineering division out of Pinehurst. This intersection was recommended for, um, a stoplight. So we're asking for consideration here and this work is intended to start pretty quickly by the DOT to install this light. And if you've ever been to that intersection, it is, um, dangerous and we've had several, um, accidents at that intersection.
It's where the log truck collided with a few years ago. So what does the resolution do for DOT or?
It shows that there's local support from the county board of commissioners and it gives them in the, in their mind, the authority to install the light.
Thank you.
DOT has reviewed the resolution that's in the packet and has said it will meet their requirements.
And having sat on the TarPO board for a number of years, I'm here to tell you that intersection, along with a few others, comes up on a regular basis for controlled access, especially when those industrial facilities close and change shifts and such, the, uh, traffic gets really tight in there. And there's the dealing with school buses coming off Deep River Road and Deep River School as well. Just needs to be fixed.
Are they gonna change the intersection with that?
That's in the plans down the road. They'll probably put a super street in there. But as I spoke with Marshall, he's not here, but a few, few, a few proposals have been made to extend Colon Road all the way up to 15501 and then make the changes on the highways there. But the possibility of a super street going in there sooner is-
I know you're heading, what, north on 501 from Deep River Road is kinda, just a yield type. I didn't know if the stoplight would make them go to the stoplight and then turn right.
Uh, oh, you're talking about getting off Deep River Road and turning right. That's probably gonna be rearranged to make it a little bit safer. But that, uh, any, any questions on the resolution? Any other questions?
Move to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the resolution in support of a traffic signal at US 15501 and Deep River Road intersection. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is the upcoming meeting schedule modifications. Madam Clerk?
I can take this one. Um, due to some input from staff, um, we have some things that are gonna impact what would have been the summer schedule. Generally, the board has adopted a summer schedule that would have reduced the meetings for July, August, and September to one meeting a month. However, I believe Dr. Crumpton said he had an item that would impact July's schedule and, um, the EMS, um, franchise, um, process is gonna require two public hearings that'll impact the August schedule. So as an alternate, we're proposing that for the months of September and October, that those meetings be reduced to one meeting a month to allow the board and staff the opportunity to take, um, what would have been, you know, vacations throughout the, the summer after we get through these processes, um, in July and August.
It's not summer anymore.
It'll be a fall vacation, I suppose.
Kids are back in school, aren't they? Not to mention the fact that COVID has created, uh, the possibility of us having public hearings on how to deal with the public monies as is coming through the American Recovery Act.
That's what we were, that was the issues that we were gonna need to discuss.
We're gonna have a busy summer. Do we need any action on this or we're just gonna discuss it?
I can notice the meetings accordingly as we approach it as needed.
Okay. Any other questions on the summer schedule? The modified summer schedule? None whatsoever? Okay. Thank you, COVID. Next item on the agenda is the county manager's monthly report.
Why don't you go first with the financials?
Good evening. You have in your package our April 2021 financial report. As you will see, we're about 0.9% ahead of where we were the same timeframe last year as far as tax collections goes. So our tax department's been working hard and keeping that up. As far as expenditure goes, we're looking at approximately 83.33% as our target. Again, some of our departments look close to that because of the encumbrance numbers being issued, um, included. Those encumbrances are covering us through the rest of, in some cases, through the rest of the year, so that'll balance out. If I exclude those, emergency management is only department over and that's due to some of the cost incurred for the pandemic expenses. And we will be bringing a budget amendment to you at the next meeting, um, booking some of the FEMA revenue to help cover those expenses. So that'll bring them back in line. You will also find capital project update, um, included, so you can see where we are. The Vet Med Technology Facility is, still has about $446,951.76 that is unspent. They are working to close that out. Civic Center Project is finished, so I'll be transferring that $137,123.43 over to the general fund to help offset the debt service on those, um, the community college bonds for this year. Courthouse Complex, you can see we still have about $3,889,464.33, 38 cents that's, um, remaining as of March 31st. Park Improvements, $2,975,345.88 is left unspent, um, at this time. And the LGC, um, Lee County Government Center renovations, we have about $3.5 million still left there. These are, of course, as of March 31st. All those projects, um, those last three projects are moving ahead at pretty good speed now. So some of those funds, as you'll see, by the time we get to June 30th, will be spent, um, quite a bit. The Multi-Sports Complex, we have spent $5100 and do not have revenues in yet for that and we knew that going forward, but that was to do the option on the property. So, any questions on either one of those reports? Not, you also have the sales tax reports through the, um, month of February collections. If you look at the sales tax distribution report in your package, you will see that I have added the projections for this year to that so that you can see because obviously, you know, we were well exceeding our budgeted numbers since, um, when we did this last year, we were anticipating a drop in sales tax. That has not happened, thank heavens, and stuff. So I wanted to put our projections on there so you'd see what we have modified to and you can see we are very close to our target even on that. We would be at 66.67%. In most cases, we are just barely below that. So we continue to do well in sales tax. If you look at the additional sheets, you'll see that we are still seeing overall about a growth of 16.29%. I will say in February, it was interesting, as far as Lee County, we did really well. We did see a drop in our Article 40 and 42, which, um, a big portion of that is gonna put into a state pot and split back to us on a, um, per capita basis. So what we are seeing is some of the rest of the state did not do as well. And also, our, we did see a little drop in that, but still it has not affected our overall collections and we're still, like I said, around 16% increase. So hopefully that'll carry us through the rest of this year and on into next year. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have at this point.
Any questions for Lisa? Always good news. Hopefully we'll keep that way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Now, Dr. Crumpton.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, um, and members of the board, give me an update on the courthouse and government center renovations. Registered deeds has moved in and is up and running. I visited her yesterday. The facility looks excellent. Um, as was, um, discussed a little earlier, there's still some work going on on the second floor. That's all BAR has left in that facility and will be devoting, um, all of their time to the, um, main courthouse building and the, um, government center. The historic courthouse, uh, first floor renovations are essentially complete from BAR. Our staff is putting some cabinets up and, um, we should have furniture moved into there pretty quickly. So the DA will be able to move sometime after June 1st. We're coordinating that move with them. The contractor, again, is gonna be working an odd schedule at the, uh, main courthouse building and hopefully we'll have minimal interruptions of courthouse operations there. Uh, the Board of Elections moved to the old bowling alley building is on its way. Furniture has been ordered. Uh, walls are going up and, uh, we hope to have them, um, moved in June before our elections director leaves. We, we told her that's gonna be her, her last hurrah before she leaves us is helping everything move over there. And, uh, once the Board of Elections is out of their current building, Johnson Lee-Harnett Community Action is interested in taking over that building. So we'll be discussing a more formal proposal with the board, um, at one of the upcoming meetings. The parking lots, uh, the one at the corner of Elm Street, uh, the design's complete. We should be out to bid soon. The city has approved the rezoning request for the Douglas Drive Building Parking Lot. We should be out for, bid for that extremely soon as well. And, um, the renovations to the other courthouse parking lots, um, is in there as well. So, um, we're moving along. We're also moving along on the, um, the court, the, uh, parking lot in the crossway at, uh, the government center and hopefully we'll have that underway, um, in the near future as well. Met with J.A.M. Thompson today, um, went over the park projects. They're putting, um, all their emphasis in the Kiwanis Children's Park and Horton Park because in two weeks, two or three weeks, we'll have the park, uh, playground equipment delivered. And so they're making sure that those areas are ready for the, um, contractor to install that. Uh, also at Kiwanis Children's Park, in the next couple of weeks, you should see the, um, youth tennis court and pickleball courts starting to take shape. They're about finished with all the grading work there and then they'll, um, concentrate their efforts on OT Sloan and Temple Park and still expect to have everything ready by August 31st. Bob Hale Center, um, a lot is complete, framing, construction, HVAC ductwork and the rough for electrical and plumbing. And they're moving on to the final for electrical and plumbing and, um, should be able to get IT and furniture installation in June and completion by July 1st. And if you haven't been by OT Sloan to see the new T-ball fields, um, they are awesome. And the T-ball league is, um, uh, really going well. So congratulations to Joseph and his folks. Um, really seeing some great work with programming right now. COVID-19 update. Uh, just go ahead and tell you that COVID has not left Lee County. It is still around us. But, uh, things are a lot better than they were. The Health Department, uh, did have a, um, event yesterday for first shots. We'll now have another event in two weeks, um, or two or three weeks for second shots. And the mass events that are being done here are starting to wrap up. So, um, I put in my, um, report, I thought it'd be edited by June 1st. It may go a couple of weeks beyond that, but, uh, no later than probably June 15th. And, uh, we should be finished here and they'll be moving back to the Health Department to give shots on schedules there. So I wanna remind everybody that, um, you know, Colts still has their grant money and if anybody needs a ride to the Health Department or to the mass event, they can call Colts and schedule a ride. All right. The Bike Park. I've learned more about mount, mountain biking than I ever thought I would in the last five weeks. I'd never knew there was an association called the International Mountain Bike Association and they have affiliated organizations all over the country. And, uh, we have a group of folks who are trying to organize an EMBA, um, organization here in Lee County so we can organize our volunteers and get them, um, involved with that organization because that organization has training. And also, if you, uh, pay annual dues with them, you get a liability insurance policy to maintain the trails, which adds additional protection to the county. We've done an analysis of the Gravity Park and, uh, there are six trails up there, five of which are, um, expert level, which some, uh, citizens are trying to debate with me about whether they are or they aren't. Whether they are or they aren't isn't real important. What's important is that they're safe and, uh, there's some issues with those trails that, uh, um, need to be addressed before we reopen. However, there's, there are ways to get open, reopen quickly and under my authority, um, you know, that I have and some funds that, uh, Joseph has, I'll be hiring, um, a- know, that I have, and some funds that Joseph has, I'll be hiring a trail consultant to begin work and get that moving. We're not talking about a lot of money to get moving on that, and if it does start to look like it's going to be a lot of money, we'll be coming back to talk to you about that. But it's not as bad as we think it might be up there, but we do need to do some things to make it safer before we reopen. And our idea is that if we can get up there and work on individual trails, we can open one at a time and do a progression in opening that back up, and also make sure that, you know, that every level of rider can go up there and ride, because it is an open area. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions on the mountain bike park. But, you know, there are a lot of people that use it. I've heard from a lot of them. Joseph has heard a lot from them. Surprised you all have not heard a lot from them. I know Commissioner Connect has a couple of people that have contacted him, because they have told me that they have contacted him. So, he obviously, one gentleman told me that Dr. Connect keeps him riding, so I guess he keeps his back in line while the jumping. So, very interesting, but it's, you know, the park, you know, it's just amazing how much it is.
It's a huge attraction. It's a very big attraction.
It is.
And people come from around the state to ride this attraction. And as of now, I think there was only one jump that really was getting people. Everything else was pretty smooth sailing, but that doesn't mean we can't be concerned, right? So, I think quicker the better, because people are waiting.
Yeah, that one run, that jump, and then the top section has to be changed, because that's what's causing the speed issue. So, it's not just the jump, you have to change some things at the top. And then the other runs, most of the safety issues are, you know, I call them harpoons. You know, you got to get on the trail and get all those sticks and potholes and other things out of the way that are, that are, you know, potentially dangerous. And we, you know, have had some broken bones that we don't know about up there, or people have done some things and didn't report it to us. So, you know, just, just some, you know, detailed maintenance, I'll call it that. Detail maintenance needs to be done, and we can get things back open. So, I think it'll be a good thing.
There are still bike trails open up there?
The, the single track that goes around the, the park is still open, the 9.5-mile track. And down at the bottom of the mountain bike parking lot, they still have the pump track open, and a trail that they call the camp trail is open. So there's still people going out there and riding.
Yeah, I see bikes there all the time.
And they're just not using the Gravity Park.
I see vehicles pulling in there with bikes all the time. I was just curious. Okay.
Yes, sir. And, you know, obviously, we're in the middle of the budget, and you have that schedule, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that the Board might have about my report.
Seeing there are none, any timeframe on, on the improvements?
At the Bike Park?
Yes, sir.
Well, we can do some, maybe three to four weeks, and then there'll be some that'll be a lot longer than that, but it won't stop us from reopening, so we're hoping three to four weeks.
Thank you. If we can go around the room for Commissioner comments, starting with Commissioner Carver.
I don't have anything to add tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner LaValle?
Nope, thank you, though.
Commissioner Sharp?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
I guess I'll be the only one. I want to give a brief report on the Department of Social Services Board meeting yesterday. Just a quick update, some timelines for those involved in the enrollment and timelines for Medicaid, which is going to be the Medicaid transformation for North Carolina. The open enrollment period ended May 15th, so that gave everyone a chance. And in Lee County, we had 11,902 eligible to auto enroll, and only 995 auto enrolled, I'm sorry, open enrolled, not auto enrolled. That's only 8.3, 0.36% that open enrolled. So those that did not open enroll will be automatically enrolled. That begins, like I say, May 15th, and it's scheduled, you still have a process to go through if you're not happy with the provider through the auto enrollment, and the actual benefit program will go online July 1st of this year.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Oh, thank you for all the ones that have helped us get these masks off and stuff. We got to steal, you know, our county, our emergency management, all those have done an excellent job in getting us safer. Thank you for all those.
I want to thank Commissioner Reeves for the resolution honoring Mrs. Kabasek. That was very thoughtful, and appreciate it. The, I know most of you got the Business North Carolina Edition, and there is a fantastic write-up regarding some of the successes in Lee County. Sanford Area Growth Alliance is highlighted in there, as well as Bob, who is recognized in here quite extensively. Bob Joyce is, he's the man. We're going to keep him, right? Awesome. I have nothing further, other than we are going to go into closed session. All of those with staff will stay put. I guess Mr. Randolph, I'll see you tomorrow. Take care. Have a good day. Drive safely. Where you seatbelt, no speeding.
I move that we go into closed session per NC General Statute 143-318-11A9 to discuss public safety plans.
All those, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nobody's opposed? Thank you. Okay.[1019.42]
Do I hear a motion to go adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Motion's been made to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much ladies and gentlemen. Please drive safely where your seatbelts are not speeding.